And we take five minutes for a break.
We'll take a break and then can we move to 11:15 till after lunch? Solid waste fee discussion.
That's your call, Mr. Chairman. I can tell you that Buildings and Grounds in Johanna are ready to present on that.
Probably doesn't take very long for that one.
I don't think it should, but you never know. Okay, where is that one?
Yeah, huh, oh, well. Would be nice if they could do that, wouldn't it?
Where in the heck did that go?
Hi, Commissioners.
Who? Ben, are you home?
I am on the road.
On the road. I know you sent that to us. Oh, wait a minute, maybe I just found it. Nope.
So I should have sent it on Friday. I think it was maybe around two in the afternoon.
And it came from you?
Yep. I can resend it.
Please do.
We haven't.
Oh, wait a minute, I found it, I found it, never mind.
Okay.
I'm good, I'm good. So at this time, our next agenda item is a discussion decision regarding the commercial solid waste fee, number seven from Resolution 2219. And I'll go ahead and turn it over to you and or Scott, whoever's leading the discussion.
Yeah, I'll just all start off and then Scott, I'm sure has lots of things to add if necessary. So first of all, I just, I want to give a huge shout out to the team of people that made this possible. We adopted a new commercial solid waste fee a little less than a month ago and have it almost entirely fully implemented in that time. So DeeDee down in the Assessor's Office did a lot of work. Rich Robinson did a lot of the initial startup work on this project. So there's a lot of people that made this possible. And anyway, huge thank you to everybody who put in the time. So a little bit of background, the new commercial solid waste fee has seven different tiers. And the seventh tier does not have a price listed with it in the resolution. And so that is going to be determined on a case by case basis. So today, we are presenting on what we believe those number seven tier fees should be for the four applicable businesses, six different parcels that will be receiving them. So I sent out a little background information, two different scenarios on what we believe these fees should be. And I'll just give you a little bit of background on each of them. So listed on on the Excel sheet or in the body of that email, you see the four different businesses that are classified in that tier number seven. And the reason they're classified there is because they have trash compactors on site. So they compact their own solid waste and then Lake Shore hauls it up to the transfer station for them. And those are the Shore Lodge, they have one 30-yard compactor that's picked up twice a week by Lake Shore. Albertson's has one 30-yard compactor picked up roughly once a week. Ridley's has one 30-yard compactor also picked up roughly once a week. And then Tamarack has three compactors on site, the first of which is, all of them are 30 yards, the first of which is picked up once a week, the second is picked up every other week, and the third is picked up only once a month. So I have the parcel numbers listed next to each of those businesses and then a little bit more information on the sheet. So the first round of this, back in our initial discussion, we came through and we were able to to put some numbers on what we thought this special assessment should be. And they actually were really close to the numbers that Great West Engineering had provided in their estimate. You can see those numbers listed on Scenario One. Are you tracking tracking where that is?
Yep, yep, we're good.
Johanna, just to let you know, I have the spreadsheet on the projector too, so they can see it.
Perfect. All right, so we were pretty, pretty excited that our numbers matched up with Great West Engineering. And, you know, looking at the increase in fees, thought that that could be, you know, a palatable fee for each of these four businesses. But then I went in and I I did a little bit more digging and a little bit more work because I wanted to make sure that we are truly assessing the amount of cost that the county incurs by getting rid of the solid waste for each of these businesses. So if you flip over to Scenario Two, this actually provides a little bit more accurate picture of what it actually costs Valley County to deal with the solid waste for each of these businesses. So we estimate that it costs Valley County $100 per ton to get rid of the solid waste. And that is the $80 per ton that we pay Lake Shore to dispose of it and the $20 per ton that we pay Clay Peak or Adams County to receive that solid waste. Looking at the annual compacted garbage that is received into the transfer station, in 2021, we received just over 1,000 tons of compacted garbage. And so far this year in 2022, we are at 810 tons. So looking at the totals on Scenario One, those tonnage numbers were vastly underestimated. So that was estimating that we'd only bring in about 726 tons of solid waste collected, when in reality, it's closer to 1,000 tons per year. So Scenario Number One, there's, there's two differences. Scenario Number One only charges $80 per ton and it's not looking at the total tons collected very accurately. Scenario Number Two trues up that cost to the county to $100 per ton and it gives us a closer estimate of what our total annual tonnage will be. So if you look, the special assessment fee that we are suggesting in Scenario Number Two for the Shore Lodge would be $23,400, Albertson's $26,000, Ridley's $26,000. And then the Tamarack has the three different compactors at $13,000, $6,500, and $3,000. So there are just a few other things I'd like to note before we go to Scott or ask any other questions. The Shore Lodge has the compactor, but they also have several other trash services on parcels owned by the Shore Lodge. So for example, at one of their restaurants, they have a dumpster. At one of their employee housings, they have three dumpsters and trash can service. They have a couple dumpsters scattered along at other sites. And in the email, I mentioned what their other additional solid waste fees would be outside of this compactor fee. And then the other scenario that's a little bit different is Ridley's. The business is located on a parcel that's shared with several other businesses in McCall. The Liquor Store, Ridley's, the UPS Store, Mountain Metal, Meadow Rentals, and Rite Aid are all located on that one parcel. And so each of those businesses will also incur a special assessment fee for solid waste. And I believe that total was just over $2,000.
Yeah, here it says 2,200.
Yes.
Real quick, Johanna, on the, the average cost at the Clay Peak in Adams County, isn't it more like $26 a ton now? Or $25 a ton? Didn't that fee just go up? Scott, you remember? Maybe that's what I'm thinking of. I guess what I'm saying is the $20 a ton may be a little low, but I'm not, I can't remember in my head what it, what it should have been. And we can go back and research that. But I think this is a great start. This is actually nice to be able to have this. The weights and the tonnage and all this stuff finally provided by Lake Shore. We never could get that in the past. It was considered, you know, secret information, I guess. And now we're finally getting that and we're seeing who's really contributing to the.
That's correct. The ladies up at the transfer station were able to provide the tonnages for us.
They provided, actually, Lake Shore provided us tonnage, but it was way off.
Ah.
They're saying they were about 1.5 tons per load based on being a 30-yard dumpster. And when we started looking at the data, the ones coming from Albertson's and Ridley's are generally really heavy. There are four, I have six tons of those.
Well, we're getting actual weights now from.
Yeah, they, they, we had the actual weights.
Good.
That's what they provided to Johanna. That's how she was able to get a more accurate picture of what we're actually having to haul.
And are they doing that up to this date, Scott? I mean, they're keeping track of that every week?
Yeah, they can do the whole year. They can pull it.
Oh, great.
They gave us the whole month of October up to Friday or something. So, yeah, they can give us a whole year.
You were talking last time, I think we talked about this, that they needed some kind of a computerized system to be able to do some of this?
Well, they're, they're, actually, this information was new to me. I thought they were, you know, keeping track of it manually by their wastelifts. Yeah, that's what they, not only do the compactors, actually, they're tracking everything. They are tracking compactors.
Good, good. Well, I guess what I would say is just continue to track them.
Yeah.
Okay, is everybody good with this?
We're gonna have to, this is gonna kind of have to be reviewed on a yearly basis.
Mm-hmm. And Johanna or Scott, I don't know who asked us to, but I think some of these bigger businesses are also bailing their own cardboard and recycling their own cardboard. Is that correct? I thought Albertson's bailed their own and put it back in their own trucks and. Where did I hear that? Maybe that was from Scott.
They do have a cardboard compactor at the back of their stores.
So that we, I guess the goal is to see if they'll increase their recycling.
But it's beneficial to them. I mean, the more they recycle, the less they're sending to us, the less we charge them.
Okay, any more questions?
I just think it's a tremendous job. I appreciate it, Johanna, to get this done and get this kind of, and Scott, to get this kind of information. And now it looks like we're trying to charge what it's worth. And I think.
What are they currently paying? What is their current fees?
Their current fee is $330 per.
Yeah, I mean, it's shocking. Different, yeah.
This is going to be a huge hit to these companies, but it is truly what, you know, the cost is to process this product.
Essentially, the other members of the county are supplementing that because they've got to make their cost to, they've got to make a living.
Um, Johanna, this is Zell again. Are we gonna do this for any other large businesses in the county?
So all of the businesses in the county have switched to the new tiered commercial fee structure. So everybody's rates are changing this year. We used to have one solid $330 rate for every commercial business. And with the help of all of those individuals I talked about earlier, we went through and looked at every business, determined what type of trash service they have and then determined what type of commercial fee they would incur this year on their taxes.
So I guess what I'm saying is that we're, we're going to be doing this a lot down the road for individual businesses to set that fee.
That is correct. We will have to have an annual review of this to determine if the scope of business has changed and the amount of solid waste they're producing has changed. We went from collecting $196,000 in commercial solid waste fees to this year, if you adopt Scenario Number Two, we will collect $383,460.
So my question for you guys is, is do we, do we do it in steps? This is a huge impact to businesses for this large of a step in one year. I mean, I would almost be rather go to Scenario One and then tell them, you know, we're headed towards Scenario Two of looking at what our actual hard dollar costs are and allow them a year to try and change their process. Because, and this is, this is a big impact in one year, go from $350 to $23,000. I mean, that's, that's just, it's a big hit.
I understand what you're saying, but you also have to realize that for the last 15 years, they've been getting it for $330 a year when they should have been paying.
No, absolutely. I don't.
A lot more.
I mean, that's just, that's the reason we did this study. That's the reason we're doing this and that's the reason we've got a seven-tier approach to getting these things. And we've been there. We talked about this and it's not secret to anyone. And I think that they, it's just what they're producing, you know?
And while I agree with that, we also haven't given any information. I mean, we've been doing our research and now we're just saying, okay, well, here's your new fee without allowing them, you know?
They've got preview to this, I guess. But I don't know. How many meetings? We've had several meetings really on this subject. And we've publicized it.
I mean, this is the first time that we've actually had, you know, data behind it to actually look at. And that's what's, I mean, it's given me pause to go from $350 to $26,000 for a couple of companies. That, that's a big jump. Hit the bottom line, so.
I'm guessing that those, this is not their first rodeo. Albertson's is one of the biggest in the nation, so they, they.
For a legend, Tamarack, yeah.
I mean, it's not.
Well, and I think the people that are creating the trash are paying for the cost.
Yeah.
That was the goal of this whole program.
Yeah.
And, yeah, it's going to be a shock, but no different than my grandma getting a shock when her trash went up, you know? Just the way life is. So we need a motion to approve these new commercial rate fees for these four businesses.
I'll make that motion.
So you need a motion for a specific scenario?
Correct.
And for Scenario One or Two?
I'm gonna go for Scenario Number Two, Mr. Chairman, and make that motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'm hesitant, but I will second it.
And moved in second to collect the new solid waste fees for these four commercial businesses under Scenario Number Two. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
I'm gonna put no. I think we should do it in a step, but.
Okay, motion passes. Please note in the minutes the vote. Thanks, Johanna. Great job, you guys, all your team.
Yep.
Thank you, Hannah.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Did a great job.
Thank you.
Of the data.
Thank you.
Have safe travels. We're gonna move on down to our agenda. Our next agenda item is also an action item. This is a presentation from Mrs. Deborah Faraday to request Valley County, Florida County Commissioners, to request a 30-day extension from the US Forest Service for comment period for the supplemental EIS for Stupnight Gold Project. Welcome.
Morning. Welcome. Welcome. And here I am, whom I should say welcome. But anyway, do I need to state my name and address? Is that correct?
Um, yes, sure, why not? Not your address, just the town you live in.
Okay, I live in McCall. Again, thank you, Commissioners, for hearing me. My name is Deb Faraday. I am a fourth-generation Valley County resident and citizen and a 42-year business owner in McCall. And I'm also a steering committee member of the Idaho Headwaters Economic Study Group. The new supplemental draft EIS that just came out, October 27th, has 1,667 pages to it. And that doesn't even include the specialist reports. So I'm here just to ask, make a reasonable request that the Commissioners write a letter to the US Forest Service asking that the comment period be extended 30 days, if not 45 days, just to give people more of an opportunity to respond. Number one, the holidays are upon us. We've had two consecutive holiday seasons with COVID where folks weren't able to fully enjoy being together and travel was restricted with not enough time. So, you know, it's, it's gonna be kind of a, a real short time window. I believe January 10th is when comments have to be submitted.
Thank you.
Most who will be receiving and commenting are working people and many of those are business owners. And this review will take valuable personal time and effort. Also, public awareness and interest has grown since the last draft environmental impact statement. And folks do want time to digest and understand this lengthy new supplemental draft. And actually, my last little statement is that taxpayers did pay for this STEIS. So, you know, we need to give taxpayers time to review it. So again, my request is that, that you do write a letter to extend that, that time period for, for all of us to have time to digest and to make informed responses to that. Thank you. I'll stand for any questions if you have any or.
The primary concern, if I understand it, Debbie, is this that the timeframe of 75 days is encumbered by quite a lot of interruption, vacation, holiday interruption, bringing, bringing the actual realistic amount of time to review more narrow. And then so our, the request to us is just a letter to ask if the Forest Service would be willing to extend that period of time, essentially.
Correct.
So.
So have you requested this of the Forest Service already? The Forest Service, when they set that 75-day window, also understood it was over the holidays. What's a normal window, you know?
I'm trying to understand your question. Did we ask the Forest Service?
Well, when the Forest Service said this, they also understood, you know, what was happening between now and that date. So they set it at 75 days.
Well, that's typical, isn't it? It's the typical is 75-day. And so all we're here to do as citizens, and I would assume that you as Valley County Commissioners too, would want to have more time to digest the information in this lengthy report. I mean, I've looked over the, just the 86 pages that were devoted to the socioeconomic portion. And I'm having a hard time making myself understand the tables and the graphs and things. I would like a little bit more time. And that's just the 86 pages devoted to that. There's a lot more to look at. So I just, I just think it's reasonable for taxpayers, you know, to have a little bit more time, is, is all I'm asking.
I guess my concern, Deb, is I think by code, they can only go 75 days. I'm not sure.
No, there's been, there've been extensions before.
EIS or preliminary or what stage you are in the game, but Congress is limited what, how long they can extend those comment periods out. And I don't know if that's one of these or not.
But I'd like to ask the Forest Service some questions. I mean, we get input from one person, but why not have the Forest Service at the room and ask them, you know? Are we being collaborators? I mean, I know that we're a cooperating agency on this, aren't we? And you've been going to those meetings?
Mm-hmm.
So what's just came out, isn't this a compilation of what's already been out there?
I'm not an expert. I can't, I can't answer that question.
And I can't.
I just know I'm here representing a request of, of taxpayers and citizens who, I know these requests have come to agencies like the Forest Service before for extensions and they've been granted. So it's just a reasonable request to ask the county commissioners who represent constituents like myself and others to ask for an extension.
So one of the things that, and kind of respond to Commissioner Hasbrook's concern, well, of what they have, that they can or cannot do, one of the things about this is we gotta be careful. All we're asking for is, can you extend this? There's no, no, they have no obligations to award an extension based on our request. It's just that this one other industry group is saying, well, maybe this would be a nice thing for you to do, so.
One, my concern is, Deb, you represent one group. And everybody always thinks that the voice of everyone else is not heard. I mean, other people do have opinions also that may be in support or not in support. So we're, we hear from one group and we don't get a thorough analysis of, of truly what, you know, the cross-section of the population is.
So I'd like to just make one comment to your comment. I'm not here representing just one group. I am a citizen. Yes, I am part of another group. I, I don't want to be boxed in as being, representing just one group. I, I think I speak for more than just one group. I mean, it's, this is a democracy that I'm just trying to have a voice in, that I'm just trying to take part in. And I just believe I'm coming to my leaders who represent me and just making a reasonable request. And to your point, that's correct, that a letter from the county commissioners is just a request of the Forest Service. It doesn't mean they're gonna grant it. It's, it's just a simple request. And that's all we're asking for.
Yeah. Well, I guess, you know, my, I'm kind of on the fence, Deb, either way here, because I feel like one of the biggest applications has hit this part of the county in, what, 10 years, eight years? This thing has been gone through and rost over and stripped down and read and rewritten and redone so many times that I don't know what else the guy needs to look for. I think that we owe it to these people who are trying to propose this mine some respect in the fact that they have done everything that everybody's asked, provided all the information that people want. And now I think all we're trying to do is delay them. And if, if I saw that much energy into the issues that McCall City has with their sewer and water and roads and stuff from these same people, I think your energy would be better spent there. Because the decision is not in our hands, the decision is in the Forest Service's hands. And if the Forest Service is happy with what they see or what they like and they made all the adjustments and changed some ideas or changed the roads to make this work, we should let them proceed.
Well, and it's, I, I'm kind of curious. We only got the information on Friday. This was even coming out. So, I mean, it's just like, it's at the beginning of the 75 days. I mean, if, why not come back in December and if we don't have enough time? Because this is a compilation of different plans that are all coming together into one plan. So everybody has studied those other plans to death. So if we, if we can't get there in December, that would be a conversation. But I'd really like to talk to the Forest Service about it. I mean, has anything come up on that 75 days and the collaboration?
Well, we had a little discussion in the Roleless Rules Commission here last week. And really, to me, from what I can see so far, and I'm just getting into it, is really the biggest decision is whether or not to use Johnson Creek Road or the Burt Log Road, which would be a new road. That's the only change from the, from the original environmental impact statement. And with the discussions we've had on the Roleless Rules Commission, we're pretty satisfied that if, for the Burt Log Road, it's, it's a temporary road that eventually would have to be taken back out. My concern is the county commissioners, if it's gonna be Johnson Creek Road, okay, now you guys are gonna have to step up and do a lot of work and repairs and upgrade Johnson Creek. That's where I'm coming from. And, you know, here a while back, a month ago, we talked about this and I wanted to know how many kids are gonna be in our school and how much is the impact on our trash? And I got all that information. As soon as I had that information, then I was satisfied. I don't think we need to keep delaying these folks. They have the right, just like anybody else in this country, to, they've done all the steps. They filled all the applications out, they paid all the fines or the fees and permits, and I think we should let them go to work. And I know you feel differently. I know you feel differently.
Well, I do. I feel like I'm being lectured to, actually. If you feel like you got your answers, that's okay. If you feel like you got your answers.
Have you ever been back there, Deb?
Of course, I've been back there.
Because most of the people I talk to don't even know how to get back there.
I've been back there.
Now, I grew up back there.
The mine site.
I was, I've been back there since I was a little kid and I'm going, what's the issue here?
So have I, you know? I guess what I'm here, you know, to, I guess there, I guess I just am looking for a little bit more understanding about, just stick, going back to the point of just allowing. just stick, going back to the point of just allowing, um, maybe a little bit more consideration for, for folks who feel like they still have questions about maybe even more so the socioeconomic, um, questions. How it's gonna affect our businesses.
So what I'm hearing you say, Deb, is there's not time to get it done in 75 days. You want time to complete that report. That's what I'm hearing.
Yeah, because of all of the holidays that are right in there, you know? This is coming at a really interesting time. Anybody can see that, that, that in order for people to take the time to be able to respond, it's coming at a time, Thanksgiving, Christmas, Hanukkah, you know, uh, Kwanzaa, New Year's. All of these holidays are in there. And, and it does, uh, take away from some of the diligence that, that might be required for all. And I realize there are people of all different opinions and persuasions about this mine. Uh, but I feel like our elected leaders should be, um, maybe listening to all of us and allowing just a request to the Forest Service to have them look at a longer period of time. That's all. That's all.
Asking the Forest Service yourself for an extension?
Who, me, as an individual?
Yeah.
That was my first comment.
Well, of, well, sure, but you know what? It comes at a lot better, you know? You guys hold more clout than I do. You think they're gonna listen to me?
They might.
Well, El, come on. You've got to, you've got to agree with me that it's gonna be a little bit more powerful and a little bit more meaningful if it comes from our elected leaders.
But I think what we're, what you're asking for us to do is to try and delay this project even further. And I don't think we should do that.
Oh, I didn't ask for that.
With your application for your business and McCall planning and zoning, and it kept getting delayed and delayed and delayed. Pretty soon, you come to a point where we can no longer afford to pursue this. And I think that's the goal, and I think that's not democracy. These people have jumped through every hoop that everybody's put in front of them and satisfied those questions. Let's let them go to work.
My question is more of along the line of, so I spent a lot of time yesterday trying to figure out our role in all of this as a cooperating agency. And our role is to be communicators. So you're right, we can communicate, but it's to be collaborators. And so we're, we keep, I don't feel like we should come at it at the last second and say, well, now we want more time and more time and more time. That should have come through the process of the cooperating agency along the path. You know, we don't have enough time to do this. I think now that puts us into almost a controversial situation with the Forest Service. They're, at their endgame, they have set their parameters. And I, I think it's, it actually makes, makes us not cooperative in what we're trying to do here.
Well, let me just end with this. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate the fact that you let me at least come forward and make the request. Um, I still feel like, you know, that it is a reasonable request. I don't feel like it's about delay, because who knows if the Forest Service would grant it? I think it's, um, just in the spirit of good governance to ask that all citizens be given just a little bit more time in light of the holiday. But, um, I can see that, you know, it's, um...
I have some, I have some comments on this regarding this, and I, I know this is a hot-button issue. And the appearance here is that we're being asked to take sides on the mine issue. I think that's appearance, from at least what I've been hearing in this discussion. I don't think that's the way it should be handled, because it's not our, we're, it's not for us to make, to take publicly, take that position in face of what's happening right now. So would you, to come back to where you did, well, you, the Forest Service did a thousand-page supplemental decision, environmental impact statement. Assumption is that it, it, it deserves fair review by the public, not the assumption, it's law. Okay, you have, they have to have time to do it, right? The Forest Service has decided that 75 days is a regular, reasonable period to do that. You're bringing to us an argument that 75 days is gonna be impacted by a lot of, uh, it's not going to be fair because it's impacted by holidays. I guess that's just judgmental thing, is it or isn't it? Uh, so an extension request is simply asking them for a small amount of extra time to digest by the people and respond. And it, with the argument that with the encumbrance of the holidays, that 75 days at the end of the year is not the same as 75 days pretty much any other time of the year. That's, that's your argument. Okay, because 75 days, and, and yes, forest extensions, I think, I think the Forest Service is used to extensions. I think we've already did a few on this one. You know, I think a DEIS was, or a supplemental. Okay, the pro, uh, the process has been going on for a long time, eight years, I heard. And I'm not sure just how long, but it seemed like an awful long time already. So 30 days is gonna hurt it on either side. It's a subjective call, right? You know, depends on who you're talking to. So holidays are a consideration, in my opinion. So mine advocates will have time period as well as opponents. It's not like you're giving one side or the other any particular advantage with a 30-day extension. At least that's in my opinion. Maybe so. Belinda disagrees with me. But, uh, I can't, I don't know. We extend stuff all the time when making decisions, so is this an unreasonable quest? Is it an unreasonable thing to say that maybe taking several holidays out of that as far as realistically voting to this, maybe, maybe not. I'm not keen, that's for sure. So that's why I think that's what happened in discussion.
I don't know the answers to that, and do we make this decision at our level? I mean, is bringing the forester that's working on it?
And coming back to it, we're...
And ask them questions.
If we see it.
Collaborator.
Yeah, if we see it from our standpoint as reasonable, that maybe that time thing is a little bit impacting, you know, the holidays. That's all the thing I think it's all about, because I don't think it's gonna make much difference to the decision.
The thing is, I don't think it's changing that much. I mean, we've been how many years through this, and I don't think it's changing that much. So it's, you know? I, I think that this is all about the socioeconomic report that you guys want to complete, and you want an extra 30 days to complete it. And I just don't think that that should be the purpose behind it. I would really, you know, I don't know what's going on in those meetings. I don't know what the forester is saying about needing some more of that type of information or not. I think those are questions for the Forest Service.
Well, I think once you guys get into the document and look at it, start, you're gonna realize that a lot of it is repetition.
It is repetition.
And there's very little that they've actually changed from the first one. And it's not gonna take you but two or three days to get through it. That's, but I read fast. I learned how to speed read in college, so I'm a different reader than some folks.
I was just looking at the synopsis. I mean, there's, there's a synopsis of what's changed. And so it's not like you have to get into the full 1,600 pages again. So I just, I, I again think this is a, you know, trying to extend it, and I can't say I'm on board with that either, so...
Okay, if there's no motion or no action taken, thanks, Deb, for coming in.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna adjourn for lunch, and we'll see everybody back here. Actually, we're gonna have a, after lunch, we have an executive session and then the opportunity for the general public to present. So, uh, we'll, we'll see everybody back here one and see where it goes. Thank you.